See to check in DJ George Chuck on your Facebook, on your Twitch, or on your Twitter, or on your YouTube. We are everywhere. It is Nightcap Knowledge hosted by yours truly, Mr. Mac and the legendary, the international Tanya Boyd Cannon. Ladies and gentlemen, we have an awesome show tonight. We've got Del Marina Lopez, Esquire, City Councilor at the city of Chickapie, Massachusetts, and also adjunct professor at Bay Path University. But before we get into all of that, we gotta get some shout outs. Shout out to the Rage Room right there in Jacktown, Jackson Rage Room, Central Mississippi's original rage and relaxation room located on Terry Road. You can reserve your room to rage at rage room jacksonmississippi.com. One time for the official water of Nightcap Knowledge, refreshing taste, keeping it simple, it's Aspire Pure. And certainly, we gotta give out the major shout out to the Mississippi School of Health Services and Careers. Begin your career in healthcare today. You can check them out online, mshsschool.com. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Nightcap Knowledge. It's time to put the kids to bed. We're gonna put something on your head before you get in the bed, baby. Nightcap Knowledge is starting now. I got my buttons mixed up, I'm sorry. I got my baseball shirt on.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Alright. What's up people? What's up, what's up, what's up?
Wa gwaan, wa gwaan, wa gwaan.
Hey, hey, you gotta unmute yourself, dawg. Oh, Mr. Mac. I hit the button, I hit the button. Hey, man, I was, I was digging my, my shirt, man. You know, I got excited. I was looking at my shirt. Oh, that's a nice shirt. Man, this is a nice shirt, man. You know, I don't know what people do. How could they get a shirt like this? Where would you go?
I know, I don't have one.
You don't have one? Be at the shindig this weekend. At the shindig, got it. What about this hat? You know, how you get a hat like this? I'm just trying to understand, like. You can be at the shindig this weekend, too. You get a, "I got it made." Oh, yeah. You got it made. So you can get this whole little ensemble right here with the shirt and the hat from "I got it made."
Yeah, man. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Alright, Tugalu, hey, come get your apparel, come get it from your official.
I'll wait, I'll wait, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, what you about to wait?
I'm gonna wait till my music check in. I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait.
Got some music. You ain't got no, you ain't got no roll caster though. You got no roll caster. Can you do this?
I don't need a machine. I got the voice within.
Hey, hey, look, I can't compete. Hey, but look, I got that little person I gotta go check on. So I'mma, uh, I'mma let y'all kick it.
Yeah, and then look, feel free if you guys are interested, let them come and sit in and just chill with us before we leave out.
Okay.
You know, I think that'll be good for them. So you can talk to them and see how he been feeling.
Okay, I'll do that.
That'll be a reward to them.
Alright, I'mma leave this up, but I'mma pull myself out.
There you go.
Get out, get out. Alright, hey, man, welcome everybody to the Nightcap Knowledge. Real talk, real issues, real solutions. This show is definitely the show that you need to be watching. So go ahead and share this with your friends and family. Check it out. We're gonna tell you like a T I is, T I is. So we jump off with the mental health minute for the week. It was definitely something we talked about. It's very, very, very important. I said, if faith without work is dead. So we haven't, you know, make a plan, put some work in, continue to have faith in your deity, faith in yourself, but also what would be the plan that you are going to put in place to make sure it becomes a reality, that the dream becomes a, a, something that you can touch and see and make a plan of action and continue to work. So that's what we want to continue to press upon people. You know, faith without work is dead. So you gotta continue to do it. Believe, but believe in yourself and believe in yourself that you can achieve your goal and what you're working on. Alright, now, Tanya, what you drinking over there?
Golden milk.
You in this damn golden milk. Is any alcohol in it?
Uh-uh, let me tell you, I have been on this, this healing journey and working out and it's great. We're talking about mental health because I had a mature moment this week. In fact, last, this, this rising, yeah. And I shared it with Chuck this afternoon. I have been going hard in the gym. Just like really, really going hard, being intentional and ended up working out so hard yesterday that it brought me to the ER because I never dealt with, yeah, never dealt with sciatic nerves and things like that. Oh, but baby, when I told you I was in tears.
I understand it.
And so, um, I, I, it was, it was, it's amazing how the times that we're in right now with the harvest, the hunter's moon, I call it harvest moon, as well as the full moon and ancestors always ever being present. I had a moment where I listened to self and self was, yes, you're being intentional, but you're not overstating. I need you to understand that, yes, like my husband would say, you ain't young no more. And I was like, boy, I am younger. Age ain't nothing but a number. And so I would, you know, have these kind of, you know, these responses to him. And he would say, you can't work out like you used to. You can't do it like you used to. All I was hearing was, I am not old. I am still young. I can do whatever I want to do. But my body was saying, yes, you are aging. However, you still can apply it, but your, your approach to it has to be different. And so the overstanding of understanding that, yes, although our ages increase, the wisdom has already surpassed that if we sit still and listen. So I had to listen so I can over.
So your ancestor was speaking through John and you ain't listening to John. So by not listening to John, you ain't listening to your ancestors.
At all, at all. And they just came and slapped me right on the back of my left ass, too.
But guess what? Hard hair make a what?
I'm sitting right now, oh, sitting so comfortable with a pillow, waist up against my left side. And so the golden milk has been very therapeutic for me because you know hypertension and diabetes run prevalent in the black communities. And it's based on all of what we eat. And also sometimes it's not so much of what we eat, it's hereditary. And I've never dealt with hypertension, but I've been seeing my numbers increase. And so my doctor was like, take a break from coffee, find something different. And so I've always been into turmeric. I've always been into ginger, always been into cinnamon, which are all natural spices from, you know, our native lands. And so I just started doing the golden milk about four years ago, but I wasn't intentional about doing it. Now I've just gone in the kitchen. I just whip it up. Don't even look it up. I just whip it up and I know what to do. Thank you, ancestors. Thank you, almighty. Whip it. And so turmeric is an anti-inflammatory, cinnamon, black pepper activates the turmeric, and the ingredients within turmeric. And then ginger is also an anti-inflammatory and also it's great for, um, um, Chuck, I can't remember. It's, it's the immune system. So having.
Digestive health.
Yeah. So having these products within the body, we break down a lot and it helps us to avoid having to get prescription after prescription after prescription.
Yeah. So you know what else is good for the body? Scotch.
I got some on my counter. I'm just not drinking it right now.
They got, this is, uh, Tugalu, baby. Founders, we get Tugalu. We gotta jump out there with the Glen Left. We gotta have the good stuff.
Come on.
Cause I know we drinking Jack all weekend. Big, 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 big shout out to Larry Lincoln Leggett Obama. We are drinking the Jack all weekend. We definitely gonna be making some Jack ups. So we gonna be a big shout out to Larry, Jack Daniels, and all the brands that's associated, Brown Pharma as a whole. Definitely a big shout out to them. Man, hey, you know, we, we have found our niche and we like gentleman Jack. We like, we like, uh, the apple. We like the honey. We like all the different Jacks and we will have a lot of them this weekend as we celebrate Founder's Week. But speaking of Founder's Week, it's time for your music check in.
So with our music check in, I am happy to report, man, so much is happening around the city. So much is happening within our city. So much is happening around the world. And with that being said, music has always been therapeutic. And because we're coming up on our Founder's Day weekend in Jackson, well, I'm sorry, in Tugalu, Mississippi, within Jackson and Ridgeland. You gotta know it, be there to understand it. I'm so excited to be able to share that I was clowning at the paint, what is it, uh, um, Pink Friday celebration. And, you know, somebody had the nerve to come up and, you know, was like, the I love, the I love. And I'm like, what's the name of your school? Like JSU, you know, Tugalu in the audience. And then somebody was like, only the I love. I was like, hold up, break the music. Drama, go with me. Give me that brown beat. Give me that four on the floor. Let's go. And so I went, "Tugalu Eagle Queen, we love thee, mother eagle, sir, thy name, round thy eagles to the breeze, which they enjoy the praise." Man, when I tell you, they had nothing to say but screaming. The I love had to just give it up for Tugalu because we had a moment. So coming up this weekend, y'all already know, you need to be outside the building and inside the building.
Well, we need to be it.
Tugalu College, baby. Y'all need to be over there by us.
We gonna be what? Outside.
Oh, we gonna be outside. Oh, we outside. I didn't know where to go with it.
Yeah.
We gonna be outside and we gonna be having us a good old time out there, making sure that we give in to everything that we love and sharing. We got the tailgate party. We have the brunch. We have, um, let me see, I got, I got everything. Wait, I don't know if Chuck put it up here for me, but I know.
We got a lot of flyers. We got, uh.
Look, they out there.
We got the concert block party that Friday night.
Yep.
And on the lineup, it's gonna be hosted by Mr. Jordan, comedian from Tugalu College, also a man of Alpha. We're gonna have Ms. Bridget Shields, Ms. Tugalu College 991. We have Ashley B., who represents my hometown. She's performing. We also have DJ George Chuck on the ones and twos. And we also gonna have my tail dog, Mr. Anthony Archie, AKA Doug Ruffin, D O Dove, doing his thing out there. So this is gonna be a free event behind the Health and Wellness Center. It kicks off at 7:00 PM, live music, we got food vendors. I'm telling you, and we taking it back home. We taking it, keeping it country with the food vendor. They doing heavy catfish plates and fries. Chicken wing plates, heavy.
Heavy.
They also doing fried okra and it's, and it's gonna be a real, real type of deal. There's no rolls. It's light bread. If you don't know what light bread is, you're not from the country. And plenty of hot sauce and ketchup.
Go ahead, go ahead, tell them what light bread is.
That, that light bread, you know, cause cornbread is heavy, but that light bread, that sliced bread, that's the light bread, you know, I eat white bread or wheat bread, but it's light bread. You know what it is. We gonna tell you like a T I is, we have a great time. We have vendors out there. We will have the Jack. The Jack will be ready for you. Come and get it. And we also have our frat brother, Mr. Matthew Haynes, Blue Sky Steel Waters. And he's gonna be providing massage therapy. It's gonna be a very therapeutic, fun event. And it's going down and it's gonna be behind the Health and Wellness Center on Tugalu College Campus this Friday. But this Saturday, we gonna be outside.
We outside.
And it's the Tugalu DJ reunion. I'm talking about the originators from the What's Up Wednesday, from DJ Shane O'Mac, DJ D, undeniable, George Chuck. Everybody's gonna be in the mix, but the host, the host, the person that's gonna be on the MIC, none other than TBC. TBC, where we gonna be at?
Look, we outside. We gonna be outside Tugalu. Look, I'm trying to find the flyer and put it up cause you know Chuck left us in charge. You know, you can't leave certain people in charge, you know, when you go out of town.
We, we are it. We can't, can't, can't leave us in charge, yeah, David, cause we.
I might have to go get a shot.
We'd have been tore up some shit, you leave us in charge.
Too late. We already on this thing. So hey, y'all.
I just sent you the flyers. Look at, look at, uh.
No, I got it. I got it.
Oh, you just don't know how to push it off?
No, I'm, I'm putting it up now. That's what I'm converting to. I told you Chuck left us in charge. So this what happened.
Hey, man. Hey, hey. And then part of the weekend, uh, in, in, you know, we always talking about celebration. There's multiple types of celebration. We're gonna be celebrating friendship, fellowship, but also we're gonna be celebrating the memory. Chuck and I, um, our freshman class, uh, classmate, you know, the brother Will Jenkins, um, he's transitioned. They had his homegoing services this past weekend in McComb. Uh, but we're gonna be celebrating his memory, memory, uh, this Saturday at Tailgate. Tailgate set up and starts at 11. We're gonna do, um, our release, balloon release and, and recognition for him at 11:15. Uh, if you knew Will, you know, he was up there and running a hall with us, uh, his, his cousin with his roommate Al Gons. Um, so we got that flyer too. But we asking all Tugalu, right now, Tugalu is known for providing support, um, to our folks and, and extending that, that hand of fellowship and being a family. We are going to be supporting his daughter by making donations to her cash out, Ms. Caitlin. Um, 15 year old, and right when she got ready to have her first homecoming experience, she lost her father right at that same time. And you see a lot of videos of fathers walking their daughters in homecoming events and right at the same time when she was getting ready to participate, she lost her father. So, uh, big shout out to Tanya and her big heart. Her mother wants to thank you, uh, another fellow alum, Chandra, and your donation and giving to her. And she was like, this, this lady, and say she just woke up the next morning, like this lady donated some money, gave me some money. And, uh, she's very thankful for that because, um, you know, two has a motto, history meets the future, right? So we are continue to groom the future to understand this is what we do. You know, we take care of our own and we show support. So, uh, whatever Tanya figured out, we gonna pop, we gonna.
I'm doing it now. It's, it's just uploading. Uh, yeah. So it's up there. We could definitely talk about it at the end of the show, but, um, one thing, one thing I've learned, um, is, is that, you know, again, children are very, children are very, uh, bold. And I was watching this clip today about this kid. Uh, her mom punished her because she got put out of Sunday school. Now, the mama asked her why she got put out of Sunday school and she said that, that she told the Sunday school teacher that her husband be stealing out of the, um, the church, the, um.
The altar.
Offering, 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 uh, yeah, the offering pan. And I laughed, right? I laughed, you know, cause I was like, wait, what? How she know this? And then she said, and she said, and what else she told her? She said, I told her she was stealing, he was stealing out the offer prayer and that's how y'all bought y'all new Lexus. Now, exactly. You laugh at it. And her mama said, well, where you found this information out? She said, from somebody else's mama. So when she said that, what made me, you know, think about was, we always say, be careful what we say in front of children. But we also never ask a child, what do you see, what goes on, what's happening? This could have been what she heard from, you know, her friend's mama, but she also could have seen something and just didn't know how to formulate the words to say it. Children go through a lot. Children experience a lot. They don't know how to, um, uh, verbalize how they're feeling and they don't know how to express that. So the way they do is they either act out. And so, um, I feel that with this child, Caitlin, I love you, baby. You and your mama, Chandra, I send y'all my prayers and thoughts. I didn't, I don't even know this baby. I didn't have to know this baby, but I do know this baby because of the Tugalu, we're family. So when you hear that, 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 that school, that name, you don't need to know where they're from. Long as you know they're, they're Tugalu in, that's what we do. We stand behind each other. And the same thing goes for my, all my Dilly University. Like I, I, I love hard. I give hard. I celebrate hard. And with that being said, celebrating is a great thing to do. Uh, and I'm so excited that we're celebrating tonight. This is why we here, cause she made her story. Man, she made her story. This sister represents the finer Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. Y'all know I had to wear for my sorority and my sister, bringing to the stage the first Afro Latina person of color to be elected in the city council of Chickapie, Massachusetts. Look, y'all already clapping, y'all already celebrating, y'all already giving it up. Y'all already saluting. Make some noise for my sorority, my sister Del Marina Lopez. You're welcome, 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 welcome. Look, we got so much going on in this world, so much negativity happening, so much, um, call to action and call to order that's taking place around this world that tonight is her story. You made her story. You're making us proud. You're making us stand up even more. And to say you're not even 30 and you're doing something that your ancestors started, but you know, cause we don't give, we don't give our ancestors credit of, uh, not speaking up because at the time they couldn't, right? Because if they did, that would cost them their life or their family members' life. So they still have that zeal and that power within, but they, what they did was they pushed those energies to the next generation and they pushed those traditions to who we are today. And you are proof of that. Uh, you have done what, yeah. Look, I am honored. I am inspired. I am motivated to know you and to call you, not just my sorority, but my sister and friend and my elder, because what you're doing is what I follow. So I appreciate you. How are you feeling?
Well, first of all, that was entirely so sweet. I was not ready. Um, also, it's interesting because like you say that you're like, I, you're my elder and I follow you, but also like in your realm and what you're doing, there's so much about you that is the elder, not just in age, uh, and that we all follow. That's the beauty of sisterhood. I think that's, that's the best part. I think we mentor each other, not just by being friends and by being sororities, but by respecting the work that we, we each do. So, uh, thank you for that. But the feeling is definitely mutual because you're kicking behind in your own way too, sis.
Thank you so much. I told you, Mac, I'm doing shit. Look, Mac is our friend.
You always doing shit. Who said you not doing shit?
The finer woman is doing stuff all day.
All day, every day. Hey, what's up, Sabia? We got Sabia. Laura, Laura Riviera, Riviera. Welcome, welcome, welcome as a nightcapper. So yes, I don't start stuff. I just finish it. You know, but you know.
I start stuff and I finish it. Cause sometimes you gotta start it for somebody else to finish.
That part.
Hey, well, guess what? Guess what? Guess what? I'm making blue juice for this weekend.
I'm not drinking any blue juice this weekend at Tugalu Eagle Queen. I need to get back to my hotel. So I'm telling you. We're cutting up this weekend.
I'm still like looking at these flight prices like, hmm, does one go to Tugalu this weekend?
Look, it, it's gonna be one to remember, one to celebrate. And I mean, look, we have so much more that we're planning. So don't, don't fret and don't, don't feel like you're gonna miss out.
I'm gonna miss out. That's not the question. I will miss out.
I was trying to make it, you know, a bit positive.
Hey, and Chuck is making apparel on the spot. He come get you some. And then we got some big stuff happening. Uh, we have been tapped to do a podcast for this national food network that's gonna be doing some great things at Tugalu and they'll find that a rep and we're gonna be doing that, um, as a part of, and they're doing some big things at Tugalu. When we're talking about these, uh, food equity. We got a lot going on this weekend. And we got, so I'm telling you, this is definitely the place. Tugalu 500 West Carolina Road is definitely the place to be.
The former slave plantation. Mac is like, get you behind that Tugalu. And you're like, it's okay, it's okay.
I know. I'm sorry. Look, I tried to find, you know, silver lining. Look, Sabia said.
No, when you see Tanya, when you see Tanya, when you see Tanya post and she out there Saturday and hair flying everywhere and she gonna be out there and then she, then you be looking like.
But she hair flying everywhere outside. That reminds me of that recent like reel that came out on Instagram where the girl was doing the podcast and her wig just fell. Did y'all see that one? Oh, it's a good one. It's a good. She was talking about how like, how God has never failed her. And it was like this whole thing. And she went from church to hood real quick. Like her wig just slid off.
Thank you, God. Oh, yeah. And one, and one breath. Look, Mac, Sabia said, snap, Mac, I'm gonna need a bottle here behind, sir, for the blue juice. So I, we not gonna have no wig snapping. We not gonna have no hat here. None of that. We gonna have us a good time. And look, I'll save a bottle of blue juice for you. Um, uh.
So you're sorry.
I know. Look, I'mma try to put two bottles up. Cause look, I still have your shirt. A lot has been going on, you know, when you're making her story and you're inspiring, you know, other black women, other Latino women, Latina women, it's like you, you don't know what to do. What, what got you motivated into this field of politics? What led you there? Cause I know our principles are, you know, what we stand for. And what led you there?
So I think a lot of things that, and I think when I try to pinpoint the one thing, I just sent you the reel, by the way, when I try to pinpoint the one thing, it, it's impossible to do. I think a lot of small things lead to where we are in life. Um, and a lot of it is like not even my plan. I say this all the time. I'm like, this was God's plan. This timing was not my plan. A lot of things timing were not my plan. Um, I, I didn't know when I graduated law school, I didn't know if I was gonna be able to stay around, if I was gonna go take a job somewhere else. But then my sister got pregnant and my niece was born right as I was graduating from law school. And my niece is my whole life. Like I love that little kiddo so much. Um, and so I stayed and I stayed in my community where I had worked for so long. Um, I had been involved in politics since I was in high school. I had been involved in campaigns. I had run a local mayoral election, uh, campaign for an election happening in a city next to Chickapie. Um, I had been involved in Senator campaigns and you name it. I mean, I had been doing this work. I had entered at the governor's office. I entered for the secretary of the state and then I worked for the secretary of the state. So there, there were a lot of little things that were slowly preparing me for this moment, even though I didn't think it would be happening right now.
Ah, so you, you went in with the understanding of what you were doing. However, you didn't know that God had such something so much bigger for you, prepared for you.
I thought maybe I could run in a few years. I mean, I, I, I don't know. Anytime I try to put a timeline on anything, God's like psych. So I know, mom, like, all right, God, whatever. Like, I ain't even planning it. Whatever you say, cool.
What they say, if, if you want, if you want to make God laugh, write down your plan. Tell God what you gonna do, right? So if you wanna make God laugh, when, when you entered into the arena, because we, because we just was, I just learned that it was National Mental Health Week this week. I feel like it should always be National Mental Health Week, Day, Hour, because it's, it's so running prevalent in all communities, especially in the black community, communities, we've seen. We've seen a lot of uh, mental health, mental health illnesses that have caused um, deaths, right? What kept you grounded as you took a step into that next door? That next room and then the next room and then the next room. And here you are, creating a room. What kept you grounded? How did you stay balanced? Uh, what caused you to not lose your mind?
Yeah, um, it was hard. I will tell you. It was definitely hard. But my mama was a big part of that. Um, I have a really good support system. And my mom, she just, your mom just knows when something's up, you know, like she'll call you and she'll be like, so what's wrong? And I'm like, what are you talking about? Like, you just got on the phone. What do you mean, what's wrong?
Mama knows.
She always knows. They always know. I swear, we, we have like this joke where we're like, it's Bruería. Like, you know, I don't know who's telling you, God, God ain't talking to you this much. Like, how you know what's up? Uh, but she's, she's, yeah, she definitely keeps me grounded. And she keeps me grounded with the truth. And sometimes the truth is like things I don't wanna hear. Sometimes the truth. Her saying like you're doing this wrong, or her saying you could be doing this better. Or you're letting yourself down by doing X, Y, Z. Is that true to yourself? Uh, and sometimes the truth is like, I'm proud of you, come cry. I made you food. My favorite truth is like, did you eat today? Like that one is like my soul, my soul feels that love. I think grounding, sometimes people take grounding as like this like positive, positive, positive. But for me, grounding is also like reality check. I also have a really good support system, like in my sister and my friends. I have friends who are like ride or dies. Like we ride for each other. And I think that's really important. Um, and not just like, not just sisterhood in terms of like my sorors. But like sisterhood in terms of like those friends that I can call up and it could be midnight. And I'm like, I just need a vet. And they're like, yeah, go. You know, and like vice versa. Or it's like, we need a vacation. Like let's go on a girls' trip. Whatever it is that you need. Um, having those friends who, who ride or die for you is like chef's kiss. God knows, God knows what he does when he puts people in your life. And you always meet them in the weirdest ways too, like Laura who's on here. Um, I met Laura in like the most random ways. It was this like. Overachievers conference is what I call it. But it was like they took the top uh, Puerto Rican students across the country. And brought us all to New York, um, to Hunter College. And Laura and I were on a panel together. And then ended up sitting on the board together. Um, and we were the only girls on the board. So like by nature, we had already kind of bonded like by being on the panel. And you know, when you're in New York, you like have a good time with folks. And we have very, very, very similar backgrounds. Like we're both, uh, we come from pastoral families, like we're both PKs. And we both really understand what that means in the real world, um, and how that affects us and affects how we view life truly. Um, we, we, there are so many similarities, but we met in like the weirdest ways. And then that person became like my, one of my ride or dies. Uh, another one, Yanni, who I've been friends with since I was like twelve. Um, and we became best friends instantly and like bonded over art and music, but also like bonded over. The trauma that we were enduring at the moment in our lives. And the rest is history. And these are people that like throughout my campaign, for example, like they were cheerleading. And that is so important. Like at every step of your life, it's so important to have people that like keep you grounded personally, career wise. You as a full person as you're doing this. I think a lot of what happens, and this is even just like local politics, like I ain't even famous, famous, you know, like. I can't imagine what it's like for celebrities who like have, they, they get put on this pedestal and like. I walk around and I, I have to uphold an image as a public figure. But then there are these people who like see you at your core for exactly who you are. And like understand that you're flawed and still support you and love on you. And if that kind of doesn't keep you grounded, I don't know what does.
Yeah, yeah. I, 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 I heard you say, uh, Laura, Laura, I, I never could say it right. Laura, Laura. I know, but I can't roll, I don't have the.
You can say it like with a D low key.
Laura, okay, perfect. Cause I met a Laura. It's, it's amazing how Spanish and Italian are so phonetically sound. Because Laura is the same thing in Italian. So that's why I was like, okay. Um, uh, it's amazing you have her as a friend and you could speak of that because I think people. A couple of things you say, I think people forget that friendship doesn't have a time limit as far as when you meet someone and how long you've known someone. You can have somebody you've met within a week or two weeks and you feel very safe with that person and they become a friend and family. And then you can have somebody you've been friends with for a long distance of time and they don't show any of the qualities of a friend until they want something. So that's not a friend. That's a, you know, an associate or just a moocher. Whereas, you know, you explain what a true friend is and you're a PK. So I'm, I threw him a PK, Chuck is a PK, Mac, Mac just, Mac just old school. He, he, he granddaddy. That's what we call him.
I was at the church just like everybody else, cause my uncle was the deacon and superintendent. So I have no choice.
Almost a PK.
Yeah, so he was, he was a, a honorary PK.
That's too much pressure. I could, I could do that.
It was a lot of pressure. You're right.
So with that.
And they always was bad as hell. I just wanna add that.
We had leadership qualities that were just misunderstood.
And not only that, we had that pressure placed on us because of that title. So people never looked at us as kids. They looked at us as preacher's kids. Exactly. And so with that came a lot of other uh, social uh, disparities that we. I know I had to deal with in my adult life being a preacher's kid. Because the question, you know, there were three stereotypes. Oh, you're a preacher's kid. You know what they say about the preacher's kids. You know, they the worst ones. And oh. Preacher's kids do that? Like they always had the title to go along with who the, the face of the person was. So with you being a preacher's kid, how has that, how has, has your, um, cause I know your faith and your power in God. I feel it, I hear it and I see it. With your faith in God and your connection to God and relationship. How has that played a role in your continued growth, growth as well?
Yeah. And this is also like, we have these conversations all the time. Me and Laura literally talk about this all the time for like no reason, but just, to just like dissect why we act the way we act. I was an interesting PK because, so for me, the pastoral figure in my house was actually my mom, not my dad. And so that changes everything. Uh, and she was like head of deacons, which is a pastoral position. But my uncles are all pastors. There's, a lot of them are still pastors. And like, I have fourteen aunts and uncles, so like half of the family is pastors. So it was like a ton of pressure, but I also grew up in a, in a home where like. Being a PK didn't mean a whole lot of oppression in the same way it does in other households. Like my household has always been extremely like LGBTQ friendly slash ally. Like we, my mom always taught us to love everyone and that like God does not like cast everyone to hell. For being something that like is just who they love. Um, also we're just like not very judgmental in that way. I, we weren't raised to, you know, follow like some of the norms. We were, we were allowed to think for ourselves. And so for example, I'm someone who like, I hope and pray that I'm never in a position where I would have to make this decision for myself. Like I, I hope and pray that I would never have to get an abortion, but I also believe that like every woman has the right to make that choice for themselves. And so that's a really hard construct for folks because they get so wound up on their own personal beliefs. But they don't understand that that doesn't have to be your political belief. But the kind of household that I was raised in allows me to say, yeah, my own personal belief is. I hope I'm never in that situation. God forbid. But there are always like but-ends. Because who knows how I would feel if I was a victim of rape and ended up pregnant. Who, like, there are so many ifs, you know?
Right, right.
So I pray that I'm never in that position, but I also recognize that just because my own personal beliefs are to not do that. That doesn't mean that in policy, we should be acting that way. Or creating policy and law in that way. And so I think my, my PK household is interesting because it. For a lot of people, it makes you really hardcore Republican, like staunch Republican, like, you know. Anti-abortion, anti-LGBTQ. And like, there's others of us on the other side of the spectrum, which I'm. I, I feel like I'm privileged to have this experience, which allows me to just think for myself. And regardless of what I feel, regardless of what my thoughts and viewpoints are, like I'm allowed to have them. And sometimes they differ from the people in my household, from the people in my family. There are competitions we don't have at the Thanksgiving table. Um, unless you make a sideways comment, because then I'm gonna correct you at the Thanksgiving table. I, I, I was allowed to be a free thinker.
Yeah, um, Laura says that being a PK makes it hard to make real friends. People are fake or afraid. So happy to be able to find vulnerability in sisters. Um, yeah, you're, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right about that. And, and it's just amazing to be able to have that freedom and peace of mind to talk about it. Cause Chuck and I are always going back and forth about PK. I feel like I, we, I've known Mac and Chuck since two thousand and five. And Chuck and I, uh, all three of us have worked on a lot of projects, but I know Chuck and I talk every day. And just to hear the growth in both of us as understanding that it's not religion, it's relationship. And your relationship will look different from whomever. However, if I'm standing like, like literally Saturday. I had a um, uh, Hindu brother who asked me, when he heard me sing, he said, what is it that you feel like? What is, how does that come out? What, where do you go? And I told him, I said, it's my connection to God. And he, and he said, you know, God, Christian? I say, God, I'm relationship. I'm not religious, you know? And I said, I could celebrate your God, your Hindu. I could celebrate your, your, whatever you celebrate. I am free because we all serve one. He just looks different to all people, right? So at the same time, like you say, your family taught you to love everybody, to give that love and to respect that love. And so for Laura to share that, because people will be afraid, fake, because they try to get up next to you and be afraid because they don't wanna lose positions. Or lose their seat in the church.
And I think so that's, that's, that's where I'm at now too. So like, I'm also at a place where like, I don't have like a specific church home. Like I, one of my friends is now an ordained minister at a church and I go visit there every now and then. But I, I, I got away from it because a lot of church hurt does happen. My childhood was riddled with it. And so I think it also, so that's the other side of the coin. You know, like the pressure that came with being my mother's child. Uh, that pressure is, was toxic, but also like helped because I work really well under pressure now. Because I understand that my whole life has been pressure. But it was also toxic because it was a lot for a little kid. For a little kid to feel like, you know, the things that were really leadership qualities and now they make me successful and effective. Back then, they were like, you're rebellious. You don't like authority. Uh, you don't know when to like not question the adults. And it's like, just cause you're an adult, doesn't mean you're always right. But when you're a kid, that they wanna ingrain in you, that you just like submit to authority, the way you submit to the Lord. And it's like, that's not how the real works, real world works. Like, let's talk about this. And no one wanted to have the conversation. So there was definitely like the other side of it. I was definitely that kid that people were like, ooh, like she's a bad influence. And then I'm like, look at your kid now.
Hey, so being that bad rebellious kid that they thought of to be a twenty-five-year-old Afro Latina Puerto Rican attorney. The first person of color to ever be elected to serve on the Chickapie, Chickapie, Massachusetts City Council. Being that rebellious, bold child that mama taught you how to ground yourself as a kid, has led you to this position. And we are so excited that you have made her story, mama.
She did that.
So how many days have you been in office and how has it been?
I don't know the exact count. I do not keep track. But it's been since, um, I got sworn in on January second, I think it was. It's the first week of January. It was like the first Monday in January. Um. I got elected in November, but you don't get sworn in until January. It's been a wild ride, a roller coaster, to say the least. A lot of it was like learning on the spot. Um, and a lot of my colleagues on the council have been there for so long that they could do most of this with their eyes closed. So for me, I had to just like figure it out. Um, and like, I can't say that they all weren't like helpful. Like they, if I had a question, they'll answer it. But sometimes you don't even know what question to ask. You just gotta, gotta figure out how to do it while figuring out what the question is. Um, so some of that has, has, has been challenging, but I'm open to the challenge. I, I've, I think I've learned a lot in the past few months. Um, and I'm excited to see what else I learn. I think, I think I take them by surprise a lot, which is, I personally, I find some joy in that. Because I think at first that they, they just thought I was gonna be this like kid who knew nothing. That's cute. I'm a kid who knows nothing. Let's see how long we ride this out. Then suddenly they realized she's not a kid who knows nothing. And they, I, I don't know if they love that, but you know, we work together.
So you're the only Afro Latina. How has the, the love, how has it been? You know, how, how have you been feeling with the love and support you've gotten from both. Your African-American family and your Latina family? How has that been? Um, have you met any kids or had a chance to share? Cause I saw you at your high school uh, recently. And so how has that been?
Uh, that's been really great. And so I think that's the beauty of being Afro Latina as well, that like as. That in and of itself, like the fact that they see someone who identifies as Afro Latina in this position allows them to see themselves in that. And I think oftentimes Afro Latina is not a word that's used with folks in politics. Um, at least around here, it's not. And so that in and of itself is like, the, the kids are super adorable. They're like, oh my God, she's a counselor. Um, but I made an effort to like go out of my way to also have these experiences. Like on Thursday this week, I'm gonna be doing um, uh, children's like Latino Heritage Month, read aloud. At a elementary school, like little kids are my heart. So I'm like, when they asked me, I was like, yes, absolutely. Uh, and I'm really excited. I'm gonna be reading uh, a book about uh, this character named Julia who dances bomba. And the author is Raquel Ortiz. I actually just, the, the book just came in today. Um, and Raquel, another full circle moment, I met Raquel at Hunter College when she was presenting to us. A couple of years ago where I met Laura and she's a children's author. And I specifically chose that book because once again, like my goal is for the, for the kids to see themselves, to see themselves. They read, to see themselves in the positions of power, to, to see themselves everywhere, so that they know that their possibilities are endless. Um, so I'm very excited to read that book. That book is in Spanish and in English, so I'm probably gonna read like one page in English, one page in Spanish. Um, I also, I've been to the high schools multiple times. I'm involved with the Social Justice Charter School in our city. I'm pretty heavily involved with them. Um, I was their convocation speaker. I go there. I mentor some of the, of the youth there. Um, the youth and like the kiddos, not only are they my heart because I just like gravitate towards children. I, I was a nanny before, like kids are my, are my jam. I love kids. But aside from that, like if we are, I, I wish that I had seen an Afro Latina in council when I was their age, you know? I wish that I had met more attorneys of color, nevertheless women of color, nevertheless Latina women. I mean, I, I, I knew like one, you know, and this was like right before I went to law school. I knew one. I didn't even think about this as like, oh, like this, some people don't see this as a possibility because I was always told like, follow your dreams. But some children like don't have the kind of household to like introduce them to those career paths. They've never, they've never seen it. And so for me, that part is so crucial because not only do I now also have to act accordingly. Like everywhere I go, I have to remember that a little kid is watching, um, at all times. But also it allows me to help mold them. You know, like I'm not your parent, but I am someone who you see and you're like, wow, this is kinda cool. And now you think that this is something you can attain and achieve. And it's like, what you think is what you become. So yes, think that, know that, because you can do this too. And that part is so important to me. It's actually my favorite part of the job.
Wow. Chuck, Mack, y'all have any questions? Cause I don't wanna hog the interview.
Yeah, yeah, I've been uh, talking like, you know, we ain't even over here, man. I'm enjoying the conversation.
We, we don't, we don't, we don't see this. You know what I'm saying? We don't get to have a conversation with. I know, look, I am like literally so excited because I, I know for my students who are Latina. As well as my, as my students who, because one little, one little girl told me last week, I'm Hispanic. And so I remember the conversation we had about using Hispanic versus Latin, uh, Latino month. And I, in that moment, I had to say, well, Happy Hispanic Heritage Month, you know, to her. And then we sat down and we still read a book on an Afro Latina woman who was able to um. Maximize the world with her controtal voice and, and beauty of just dazzling the world with her style of Celia Cruz. And so they celebrated and they danced. And then we talked about Tito Fuente. Then we started reading about different kids who, of, of different uh, nationalities and, and ethnicities. And understanding how important it is to celebrate each other. And that's been my mission at my school, is to push all cultures and respect. Because our kids never know who they will grow up to be and never know who they will meet. And respect because our kids never know who they will grow up to be and never know who they will meet. So I, yeah, I I'm like, I'm I'm like a kid right now in a candy store and I'm. Yeah, so I'm 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 having a moment over here. Yeah, like, look, all right, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mack and Chuck.
Speaking of Tito Puente, did y'all see the Google doodle yesterday?
I did not. I I can go back to the uh, to the archive though. It's still up, it's still up.
There you go. And there's like a little video that goes with it, it's really cute.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check that out. One of the things I um, that that made me jump in because I was I was contemplating. Uh, just kind of sitting back and 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 listening tonight, but when y'all started talking about. Um, you know, the the responsibility that that comes along with being a PK. Uh, and and some of the, the um, the unfair expectations. Uh, that are set upon you. And then uh, sometimes you don't, you don't get the same. Uh, length of rope, in a sense. You know, you know what I'm saying, to to, you don't get that same grace that other other kids. Have uh, have been extended from from humans. Now, we all got, you know, the grace that that God has given us. Um, but I I definitely just, that was the part that that really struck a chord with me in terms of. Knowing that there are other people out there with a similar experience. So us being able to, you know, to share that that community. Um, you know, right here on Nightcap Knowledge, because, you know, it it might be a um. A kid or a young person that might see this video as at some point in the future. Uh, having having seen, you know, the the four of us here that had this con- conversation. And then understand that, you know, you can walk in your truth. You can, you know, study and show thyself approval, and then you can ask questions in a way that that does challenge authority and not necessarily just toe the rope. Of, you know, the the front row. And you you know what I mean about the folk that's on the front row, the deacons and the deaconesses and the. The mothers that have done things, you know, all all the way this time, like, you know, some traditions are definitely worth upholding. But one of the things that I definitely don't want to do is to to uphold something that is traumatic. And uh, it, and unnecessary. Now, if there's a method to the madness, look, I'm, I I can, I can get with it and I might have to, you know, get in line and toe the rope. But some of the things that that I know that even me. When my father passed and the church that he was pastoring at the time, that it been my entire existence as as a. Uh, as a young person, like born into the church. Some of the things that I saw later on in life, and and you can probably speak to this, um, like y'all still doing it? Y'all still doing it. And and to round out my comments, I see it in in city government a lot too. So to ask a question a- after having, you know, given my comments and everything. What are some of the things that that you see in our community and uh. Our our institutions, right? What are some of the things that you see in our institutions that? That you wish that we would just stop doing, or some of the things even in your own community institutions that? That you definitely want to shine a light on and maybe change?
Institutions, we're talking about like religious institutions?
I see it in city government, I see it in in. Institutions, I see it in, I see it in HBCUs, I see it in a lot of places.
There's so much parallel, there's a parallel. So for example, I think back about in my childhood, when I was told that I was asking too many questions and like, you know. Questioning the authority. That happens in city government. I get told so many times, well, that's not how we do things. Um, or that like I'm I'm digging too much, or that like I need to just leave it alone. And it's so not real, you know, like, no, we're not just gonna leave it alone, like I'm allowed to ask questions. And this was even, this was the topic of my um, law school entrance exam, actually. It was about why, about the question why, um, and how we. Think it's so bad for people to ask why, and we demonize it to a certain extent. Because we feel like people are asking why and that challenges you as a person, it challenges your authority, it challenges. What you think, but the reality is we should be embracing the why. Um, and I remember at home, I was allowed to ask why. In the institution of the family, in my nucleus, I was allowed to ask why. In fact, I asked why incessantly. And my poor mother, God bless her soul, because I swear she was praying for patience and God was testing her. Because I would ask her why for everything, and I needed real answers. Like, if I was like, why is the sky blue? She couldn't just be like, oh, because it is. That's the color of the sky. No, no, no. I needed to understand that that was the sun reflecting on the ocean, and that's what was making the sky blue. And like, if she didn't know the answer, she needed to go find me this answer because this, because I said so was just not gonna be good enough ever. And so then you go into the institution of schools, you know, like even as an elementary student. When you start asking why and people start like pounding at you, I wish they would allow kids to be curious. Allow them to ask why, why is not always a challenge of you? And if it's challenging you, question why it challenges you.
I'm sorry, I just gotta, I gotta, it's, because I get it too. I get it from uh, my kids. And their response is not as in a curious manner, it's sometimes an attitude. And I can tell that it's sometimes at home, it's like, I'll say, well, when you get your papers, once you get your papers, sit still, I'll give the next set of instructions. Why? And I have to remember, as a kid, I say, because I said so, I said, I'll give the next set of instructions. Why? Because you need to wait to make sure everyone has their paper, so I can give the instructions. What, baby, go take a break, go ahead, go go take a break, because the mama gonna come out in a minute, right? And and some of them have learned to do it in a manipulative way, right? Because I, my kids are very curious and. I take them through adventures with music that way. I take them through adventures with readings that way, right? And so some of the kids, and it's unfortunate, so I have to go back and have that. Uh, um, that restorative conversation of, this is why Ms. Cannon had to sit you over here. I know you want to ask me why every time, but sometimes I need you to use both ears that God gave you, and that's why you have one mouth. So you can talk less and hear more. And I, oh, I do have one mouth. I said, why do you have one mouth? And now I got you thinking. So now I'm able to learn from you and you're able to learn from me in patience. And it's also that patience of, I love that you say kids should be curious and ask the questions, because if they don't, then I have a problem. So thank you for reminding me why patience is important, I'm sorry.
Well, well, I think it's, it's it's one of those things, it's not what you say, it's when you say it and how you say it. And and like I tell my daughter, is that, it's sometimes, when I tell you, listen, we need to like. And I told her in emergency situations, I always talk to her about this type of stuff. Sometimes you need to listen and and pick up on the tone and what I'm saying. And understand that this is not the time to ask three hundred and five questions, it's time for you to get your shit and go. It's like, we need to leave now. When you hear me say something like, we need to leave now, why? Where are we going? Why do we need leave? Ain't time for this shit. You need to get your bag, uh, grab whatever you need to go and get your ass in the truck, let's go. And and I think that's the balance of understanding, because I was one of those, I was a curious person, right? I was uh, I always wanted to, but I also observed. And a lot of times, truth be told, two reasons. Parents don't know the answer why. Just be honest, you don't know, right? So you don't want your child to think you don't know.
Because I said so ain't good enough, you better find the answer.
No, if you if you want to know, then you go find it, because that's part of, that part of.
I'm gonna find it then, I'm gonna Google it.
Yeah, well, church is, it's tied to slavery. Uh, and how you was taught to question certain things that didn't make sense to you, because they made it seem that you were questioning. Questioning God or the Creator, but no, because certain things they would talk to us that was passed down was to control us psychologically. So that you could easily be bound physically. Um, so you were like, you know, your question you asked now, you're like, but, you know. I've asked the guy, you know, I entertained every, you know, everybody, had a conversation. And I asked the person something, they could, they never answered it. They just looked at me and and they never gave me back the answer, you know what I'm saying? So it's, it's something you don't know because repeat. A lot of times what we do, we are repeat what we hear versus what we read.
Some people are living their grandmother's religion and not their own.
And so what you always learn, and and see my family was, you know, uh, oh, man, church was, uh. The church for us was one of the, I would say, one of the worst places because of the classism and hierarchy structure inside of churches, the who's who's. That's one of the major things.
Who gives the most money and offerings and tithes?
Who gives the most money, who got the nicest dish? But like I tell everybody, before I started feeding, working with feeding the homeless, I watched my grandmother feed people that had. Twelve times as much as we did, because that's what we we grew up to do, was to feed folks. So you learn certain things and someone will come with maturity. You don't put two and two together until your ass getting like, you know what, now I understand. You know? But with being a parent, you like, now I understand. When you start having those same conversations, it don't hit you until then. They're like, now I understand. So I understand what you're you're trying to. To to close the gap, because a lot of time with children, we never listen to children and what they want. And based on what their needs are, because even when it comes to structure and discipline, you will find out more when you find out where where they are. And what they need, because then you can help meet them where they are. Um, and for me, working in a behavior facility for so many years. I had a, we had a child that said, we want you to help us, we want you to help set that tone and talk to us, we want that. Even though we might not, you know, if you don't believe it, just not say that one time, just just let them do stuff and just sit there and look like this. And they were looking at you like, just like, you're not gonna say that, you're not gonna correct my behavior, you're not gonna talk to me about this, you know, because they they expect.
Now, why didn't you say that same thing that you told me to do last time, Mr. Mac?
Hey, you said you got this, you know, uh, it is trial and error, it's trial and error, it's it's trial and error. But I think these conversations are conversations that need to be had. Um, with youth in the room. I just got a call, I told Chuck about it earlier, fifteen-year-old was killed in my hometown. Uh, we're supposed to be going up there to do our Freedom Summer, our new Freedom Summer project. Um, and we're gonna touch on all this stuff, but we're gonna have a lot of youth in the room. And these are the conversations that we are gonna have, to find out what means a lot to them, what motivates them. What what are they dealing with? What are they going through? And how do we create the next city council person? How do we create the next whatever? Because they in that room. They might not see it now, but ten to fifteen years from down the road. So now we might be the people to introduce that to them, because they looking at us for the answers.
This is a whole lot of confirmation today, man. This is a whole lot of confirmation.
Oh, man, listen, the Lord don't make no mistake, we might not like him, just being honest, we might not like it, but no mistakes are made, my brother.
Each one of y'all have said something that I've said to young people. From four years old up to probably twenty-four years old within the past forty-eight hours. I mean, each one of y'all.
Our ancestors right now are, they, and I tell people, we don't understand it because again, we just not learning physical health. We 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 scared of mental health, but we can't talk about spirituality and the unknown and unseen. And how so many things, while people say are wise beyond your years, that's not your birth knowledge, that's knowledge coming from your ancestors and those who are speaking for you. And putting it in your mind, and they're talking to you and answering. That's why we are gifted to be a part of each other's life, so that whatever my gift is, is help you, and your gift, it helps me. And like I'm saying, with this just being on today, somebody's gonna be inspired to talk to their child about, you know what? You can do this. Or someone is gonna see it, you know, we all are connected and we work together. Um, and and our childhoods and experiences make us and help us become the people that we are, you know? What you just said, go ahead.
No, I I was just gonna say, you were saying that um, a child may see. Del Marino and say, I can be this, a parent would share that. Um, what keeps you going? Like, what what is it that, and and I'm sorry, Mac, because everything that all of us have said, this is crazy. All these PKs on here, but um, what is it that keeps you going? You get up the next. Uh, Del Marino, and you say, I have this mission, what is it that keeps you going?
I answered this recently at um, I was presenting at a conference with a bunch of uh. D nine orgs and um, Greek life, it was through the Harbor Institute, and we were talking about like motivation. And I posed this question of all of them and answered it as well. And for me, it's legacy. For me is knowing that like I'm living out my calling, whatever that means, however that means, however that shows up. Because again, I go back to, I don't know the answers, like people ask me what's next, and I'm like, I don't know, ask God. Like, don't ask me, he ain't told me yet, so maybe he'll tell you, like. Uh, so it's living out my purpose, but also legacy, so I know that like my future generations. Uh, my niece, my future children, my future nieces and nephews, you know, they they will all. Get to reap the benefits of like the work that I'm putting in, and they will be better off because of it. Um, the world will be better off, because they're gonna be better off and they're gonna do great things in the world as well. And so that that need to ensure that my legacy is is strong. And I I leave a good foundation for them is is motivated for me.
So randomness, you know, we did this on a coalition call. And it helps you find connectivity with people, because we all have different walks. So randomness, three things, before we get off, I want us to answer this. Favorite movie? The song that you listen to that gets you going in the morning? Chore you hate the most? All right, guest, come on, Soror, you drop it off now, you the guest, drop it off.
All right, favorite movie? I have a few that are like top repertoire, so I'm gonna go with the top three, which are all my favorite, because my sister and I binge watch these. And I could probably tell you every word to all three of these movies, is in no particular order. Mean Girls, White Chicks, and The Notebook. Yep, um. Yep.
This is why her her favorite movie is.
Keep going.
And then, what was the other? Well, that gets me going. So lately, it's been Break My Soul by Beyonce. That's been lately, but it changes. I have a really eclectic taste in music, and I can't say like it's one thing. Sometimes it's just side side in general, um, that gets me going, especially when I have to do cleaning, so that leads to the next thing. Which is the chore that I absolutely despise. There's a couple. Um, I always say I was born into the wrong social class, I should have been born into a very, very wealthy family where we had, you know, people who did the cleaning for us. Because your girl is not a fan of a couple of these chores, um, but. I think dishes and mopping, but mopping more. It's the dirty water for me. The mopping dirty water, like just emptying the dirty water, like, and I have like that bougie mop now where it separates the water. And like you step on it for it to spring it, and even still, it's the nasty, black, dirty water, like, I can't, I can't.
Don't don't talk about it no more, because it's like you bad, uh, Carl Earl, we don't need you, we see Earl this weekend, why won't you call that?
Clean it up with a mop, and I don't want to do that.
Uh, my favorite movie, believe it or not, is um. That I know word for word is The Color Purple. That's that's gonna be my top one, that that one and Harlem Nights are like, um. You know, my, two of my faves. Uh, and and then A Lion King, so I had to go with those top three, because Lion King is like up there. Um, the song that gets me going has to be Kendrick Lamar, Mary J. Blige, Now or Never. If y'all haven't heard it, you need to get it. It is a motivating, empowering, and moving song. It's called Now or Never. Kendrick Lamar and Mary J, and the chores you despise, the chore you despise, all of them, I just made them one. I I work very hard, and I had this conversation with my husband, I'm 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 like you, Soror. I've tried to hire three people secretly, and he won't let it happen. He's like, babe, together, we gonna clean this house. I say, your ass gonna clean it, I'm not cleaning. I know, I I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, mom, if you on here for custom, mom, I'm sorry. Um, but I I'm not cleaning, uh, so I'm with you on that.
I ain't married and live alone, so I could hire someone to clean this house, and I've contemplated it, I have a busy lifestyle.
I'm married, been over twenty years, got children, adult, I'm still gonna hire one. I'd just like to come and drink me a glass of wine, light my candles, and enjoy my evening as I digress, so. Um, yeah, I I agree with you. Mac, what you got since you asking everybody?
Oh, mine's is easy. Uh, movie is gonna be Harlem Nights. Tombstone. And probably gonna be, uh, that that newly added is going to be the new Magnificent Seven. Uh, with Denzel Washington, because all the minorities lived. All the minorities lived at the end of the movie, so. Yep, and my favorite song to give me going in the morning, uh, Boosie Set It Off. I like high energy. I like high energy music, you know what I'm saying? So Boosie Set It Off. Look at Chuck, Chuck Billy.
Yo, Mac don't do no chores, cause he's like, I don't have none I hate. I don't do none of them.
Nah, Mac do all the damn chores.
I I don't get that. I never understood it. I don't care if man, woman, or child. You gotta eat and you gotta wash your ass. You gotta clean your house. So that's that's mandatory.
Which one do you hate though? Which one do you hate?
Wash dishes. So I wash as I go. You know how people let dishes soak? And if you give, if you let dishes soak and just leave them in the sink. I I wash as I go and that way at the end of the night, you either got the pot that you got left or the whatever, but. No, I don't do that. And I don't believe in just letting shit shit. No, I can't let it sit. No, that's nasty. We had to go. We got to wash, we got to get it.
Chuck, what you got?
Hey, my favorite movie, I I told it to the boys the other day, Coming to America.
I knew that. I knew the answer to that one.
I should have watched it all day, like matter of fact. When I get off of here, I'm probably gonna put it on. Cause we we T-shirt pimping this weekend, baby. The the song that gets me going, I think consistently. Past the mics big. Man, look. You put that mug on. When the drums hit, oh my gosh. And and if you if you listen to those words and you can't say. That you you don't get motivated and be like, all right, God about to do something insanely big, like I don't even know what what God is about to do. You get that song in your system, I promise you, you gonna do something. And then uh, chores I despise. I would probably say. Maybe cooking because I don't like to wash dishes. I grill all day. You know what I'm saying? Like this is is weird.
What's not cooking is the washing of the dishes.
Well, not necessarily because like Shallen has made me the, you know, like I, we gotta wash as we go. I I I like to cook breakfast. I like to grill. But if I don't have to do dishes, I like doing it more. So like I I wash clothes, you know, like Shallen, she don't have to wash clothes. She hates folding clothes. She'll throw them in there, but you know, she's like, all right, folding, uh, that ain't that ain't her ministry, you know?
It ain't mine either. It takes me about a week, a week.
I never understood that, cause I I try to wash, when I wash dry, I dump my clothes and I go immediately try to go ahead and fold and put them away.
May the Lord continue to bless you. My guest room bed for a week. Respectfully, and you know, it is what it is.
It made a lot of wash between me and the and get these clothes.
Lotta is is she got a mental note to watch Harlem Nights tonight. She wanna make sure that she get her in her spirit.
It is the excellence of Harlem Renaissance, you know what I'm saying? Movie where we was, well, we had some shit and we didn't take no shit, you know? I like that movie in the era when it when it would actually aired, you know, it showed us something different, you know, you was. And it just showed, well, people don't even understand how deep it was. The the poor white trash officer was so envy of this. This uppity nigga that he couldn't stand it, that it ate him. And we see that today's in today's time. You couldn't stand it. This man was making money and he was living better than you. Even if you was on the tape and doing dirty shit, he still was living better than you. It goes back to an age old saying about saying that uh, how, you know. I forgot how it's how it's stated, but you're worth if the black man got more than you, if he's doing better than you. You know, how you call yourself the white man if the the black man has more than you, you know, type of thing. But it's just how they they didn't, they didn't lay down and didn't take it, you know, they got even. You know, and it was funny, you know, it was it was full of, full of great actors, but they didn't take it at the end. And uh, and they, you know, they made they made it happen. I like Django for the same reason, you know? I guess we see what we going with this.
And I would watch Shark Tale after this, so I'm gonna go watch Shark Tale.
I like Shark Tale too. I like the cartoons, um, especially Luck. If y'all have never watched Luck, y'all need to go and watch Luck. It's it's a great new Pixar movie. I think it's Pixar out. So I'm I'm into that too. And and She-Hulk, oh, you gotta go watch She-Hulk, cause she's an attorney. So yeah, She-Hulk is the truth. Uh, if 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 you're watching it just with the expectations of Incredible Hulk. It really shows the mindset of a woman when you're watching it, so.
And she's Latina.
And she's Latina, sure is.
So I'mma, I'mma watch Marvel. I'mma watch Marvel cause it's Marvel, you know? I I I like Marvel, but I definitely like the connectivity of of how she ended up getting her.
So with that being said.
He he trying to ruin it.
Oh, Del Marina, you you made her story. We are so, so happy to have had you on the show today. This conversation is not ending because we are forever making moves and changes around this world. And you are a true, true vessel of what we talk about when we say we got work to do. So we thank you so much for being here. Um, everyone y'all have seen Councilwoman Del Marina, Lo- Del Marina Lopez. Uh, from Chickapie, Massachusetts. She's the first person of color Afro Latina to be elected in the city council. And so we definitely want you all to follow her, support her, uh, make sure that it's your correct uh, Instagram handle, right, Del Marina?
Yes.
So make sure y'all follow her, jump on that right now. I got a T-shirt for the first person that follows her, so Dell, check your phone. Let me know who the first person is that follows you. Uh, I got a T-shirt for him, so we wanna make sure not that you follow her and then unfollow her just for the T-shirt. We want you to follow her. Yeah, on the front, cause you know, we gonna, we gonna talk some real shit. I want you to follow her because I want you to be able to say you were the one who followed her. At the start, at the middle, at the at the continuation of her success and you now become part of her story. So it's important that we continue these relationships and create, continue creating these villages around the world because you never know who you gonna need. So with that being said, what is your? Give a word to the young Afro Latina who will be watching you and motivated by you. What would you tell her? Or him?
So it's hard to not be cliche, cause the cliche in me wants to be like, if I can do it, you can do it. But more importantly than like, if I can do it, you can do it. It's if you don't see yourself reflected in who you think you want to be, go become it so that somebody else.
Wait, wait, if you don't see yourself, I can't even type fast enough.
Reflected in. People who are what you want to be, go become that so that somebody else can see themselves reflected in you.
If you don't see yourself reflected in people who you want to be.
First, the first time you you said it.
Man, look, I that's why I couldn't, I was.
It just came from the heart, so I was like, let me try to say it again, but you gonna have to watch the video for sure.
I was stuck because the first time you said it, it was it was ancestors present. And that's why you couldn't remember it the second. Look, I tell people ancestors move and they speak boldly. Yeah, we gonna have to go back, uh, sis, I don't remember, uh, yeah, all I know is I'm about to, Chuck, get that, get that ready for a T-shirt.
I'm replanting in my head right now, but yeah.
You gotta start your quote back up. You gotta start to start, start back with the quotes, you know, posting the quotes. We gotta do that, you know, and give folks their their credit. Yep.
Go watch Luck, that what you just said was 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 uh, pivotal to the movie. So um, yeah, let me know, send me my DM, let me know who was the first person that followed you. So we can get their T-shirts to him. We are so honored to have had you here.
On an obnoxious Zeta, no, you ready, you ready? I said, my soror. You're looking good today.
Well, a Zeta lady looks good every day. Yes, yes. Look at that. Look at that beautiful Phi Beta Sigma. What's up? We got another Soror in in our in our uh, midst. Y'all, y'all know how we do, Jay is in this.
Jay Jay ready. She didn't got, didn't got, didn't got Jay hype.
Yes, come on. Yes. Gonna bring out some Zeta, Zeta Phi Beta spirituals on you.
Cause that's a tradition we ain't breaking.
Hey, at all, that part, that part. I'm sorry.
Being able to recite, lift their voice and sing.
All three, all three stanzas, all three. All three of them. God of our weary ears, God of our silent tears, thou who has brought us thus far on the way, what?
Come on.
All right, I'm sorry.
But you go in and get that, I'm about to say that you go in and get that goddamn thing. Don't you do that.
I I I stay ready.
Can you pass the virtual uh, collection plate, please?
I stay ready.
A plane of women stays ready.
What? I stay ready.
Well, look, i- in terms of staying ready, we gotta stay ready uh, to to move into action as we. You hear, you hear what I said? We gotta stay ready. We gotta move into action.
That part.
You ain't got to get ready, baby.
And and we've, we've had to um. To prepare and to move into action for one of our brothers who has now joined the realm of the ancestors. We have our our friend, uh, Will Jenkins, Will Jenkins, um, my classmate from Tugulu College. Uh, both Mac and I's classmates from Tugulu and we will be doing a uh, balloon release this Saturday. At the alumni tailgate, so if you wanna participate in that, but also more importantly. Uh, he has a daughter, Kaitlyn Jenkins. We have her Cash App on this flyer. I know that we have this circulating via. Facebook and 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 other, you know, Facebook groups and things like that. So if you would like to to, you know, bless Will's daughter with a little something to. As the old folk would say, keep the hanks off of them. You can, you can definitely, you know, find this information on all of our uh, social media platforms. And in addition to, if you wanna put something in there, love the Lou, um, that's that's the little, you know. Phrase that we're putting in the memos so that Kaitlyn knows that uh, Will's Tugulu family has her best interest at heart. And uh, is has her in in all of our prayers. So we will be doing this activity in the midst of all of this right here. Uh, as we, as we celebrate the founding, the one hundred and fifty-third founding of Tugulu College. Uh, it is also Alumni Weekend and uh, you see all of these beautiful people that are assembling. To put on the best damn Tugulu Alumni Weekend ever. And I'm, and I'm talking about, we we're gonna honor our classmates, we're gonna honor our our ancestors, we're gonna honor. Uh, those who have have come before us that have paved the way. All of the people who are still here doing this work. Especially for Tugulu College. And the role that we continue to play in Mississippi, in the HBCU community and in this country and in this world. Uh, it is good for us to come back from whence we came. So this is that time, we are definitely going to turn all the way up.
That part.
But we will also have time to reflect, uh, to reconnect and we will have time to. Uh, really chart out where we're going because it's space to do all of that at Tugulu College. So with that being said, ladies and gentlemen.
What about Friday night, Chuck?
Oh, by Friday night, you ain't, you didn't take me to ask me by Friday night, but I am always prepared. Uh, young sir, so uh, I will present uh, the Friday night activities. We're gonna share the screen right now, so. Uh, y'all give me a second to get that pulled up and here we go. Friday night, um, we will be on the yard at the block party. It is the Welcome Home Ninety Style Block Party. Live performances by Tugulu College alumni. We've got Jordan Williams, who's a comedian. We've got. Bridget Hathorn Shield, D O Dub and Ashley B along with your boy on the the tables. I do believe that the uh, as Mac will say, the real Mac of Jackson, uh, who is now the Mac of of Vegas. Shane O'Mac will be in the building. My my DP along with Max Big Brother Freaky Fred, they are hosting this event. In terms of uh, them being former yard runners, so they're encouraging all of their people to come through, but this is an all-star lineup. Sweet Lou is gonna be there. All right, we don't have Sweet Lou listed here, uh, because I I I pick one new and put another one in, but. I knew that Shane was coming this year. Uh, we hadn't spoke with with Sweet Lou, but Mac has, so we we do know that. That all of our yard runners will be coming and they're bringing uh, their families with them, their friends. Uh, this will be a welcome home. Ninety Star Block Party Friday night, seven to eleven PM. And then we will move folks down the street. To the village kitchen because it's Feel Good Friday.
Y'all gonna make me get on the road and come late. My show end at eleven thirty here in New Orleans. I will be like. Don't play, don't play. I'll be in that thing, trust me.
Well, look, it it it's gonna feel good uh, at Friday at the village.
Well, I definitely know we going where we gonna have us a good old time. We going where we understand where we come from, so we know where we're going. We understand that we gonna cut up at Tugulu this weekend. Del Marina, you got that first person? You sent them to me? Make sure you text.
Not yet. I'm I'm over here looking at flights.
Just make sure that that you get the whole rundown.
Just watch, just watch the video, you know, just watch the video when we posted, cause you know.
It ain't happen if she ain't there. She said it ain't happen.
Stomping grounds at Tugulu. I gotta, I gotta go over there. Um, yes, I do have the first person. It's J A I dot love eighty-three.
Let's see, J A I.
She's still on this, Jamar, Jamaris Ups.
You know, I already got you like in the town, boo.
Yeah, that's Jamaris.
That, well, that was number one, Soror. She said. She was like, I look good today. She said that, so I'm gonna follow.
Strike like that. So a- as you, as you can see, we got more activities, uh, and and of course, this link is also uh, floating around the internets. The Alumni Tailgate, it will be the largest that we've ever hosted. Uh, there will be a lot going on here. It's Bring Your Own Everything. Tanya Boy Cannon will be hosting. Apparently she gonna get there late Friday night, so she gonna host on Friday night. I don't, I don't know.
I told Chuck, I told Chuck, whatever events he have, I'm hosting them. I'm hosting all the events.
And and we cut up.
We, look.
We hosted Josh Wade and then we cut up.
I told Josh them, I was like, I'm gonna be, and he was like, cause they wanted me to sing, but my schedule was just like, I was gonna be out of town and I made my way there. Man, I said, Chuck, let's have fun. We, look, you would have thought we were kids, kids again, like. We believe in having a good time. So this weekend, we're gonna have a good time at the tailgate. Um, and look, at Saturday, Sunday, all I'm gonna tell y'all is to be ready, bring you some uh, Cocopedia.
I'm getting my arms ready. I'm getting my arms ready, Chuck. Look, I'm getting my arms ready, bro.
Cocopedia, that brunch Sunday gonna be, all I'm gonna tell you this, the best single on that brunch Sunday, baby. Just wait, just wait.
Soror, we gonna talk when we get offline today, cause I'm looking at these flights right now and we might. Soror, we gonna talk when we get offline today. Cause I'm looking at these flights right now and we might be able to make something happen. So soon as we get offline, we gonna talk about this.
There it is. And there it is.
Let's do it. Let's do it. Let's do it.
Y'all can tell me, and, and some of the activities, like we, you know, of course, Silas, uh, DJ Nasty Show, uh, they've got Chemistry. Um, on Saturday after the, the brunch, not, no, that's Sunday after the brunch. Saturday after the, uh, the tailgate, we've got Chemistry. So there are activities that Tugulu alums that have their, you know, nightclubs, their bars, they, they've got other activities. But in terms of, you know, like the official lineup, we got unofficial things. We've got, you know, unspoken things that may happen, you know?
I mean, I don't even know what we're doing or when we're doing it. Like, that's what I gotta Soror for. She could figure that part out. I just gotta show up. She could figure out the item. I'm good.
We have food all weekend, right? Um, and we have everything set up. And that's why we telling everybody, like, listen, this year, we make sure that we got food for the tent. We gonna have. For the block party. Like I said, we taking. We got everything out there. And our friend, even though he, you know, and he's HBCU, he's gonna be rolling with us all weekend. Matthew Blue Sky Still Waters providing massages. The whole weekend with Tugulu. He's rolling the whole weekend with Tugulu. Set up with the table and the chair, ready to go.
So if you come over there and you don't put anything in the, in tip jar. One thing I know that because of the conversation that we've had with Del Marina, and, and I know these other two people that your home training, it will be on display. Don't get put on Front Street if you show up at our tent and you ain't bring nothing.
Baby, that conversation, I don't think y'all ready. It ain't gonna even be a conversation.
That lady that, that I sleep with?
Look, I get scared of her.
Anything I bring is gonna be store bought, cause I'm a.
Hey, hey, I don't give a damn if you bring ice.
Grab some Sonic Ice.
Yeah, if you don't consume it, you don't digest. Like, that's straight up. Soror, look, at, at Mississippi Greek Weekend this year, we had a party with a purpose, right? So it was bring your everything. And it's just like it is this time. It's bring your everything. Bring everything out on your tent, your chairs, your table. Don't worry about music, cause we have music. Bring your, your hand sanitizer, your fade, whatever you need to be comfortable. That part. All, all I'ma say is this, that party with a purpose, I said Chuck, he was like, bring your everything. So I decorated our table.
She set it off.
Look, I'm bringing, what?
She represented. She set it off, man.
You know what? You gonna make, you make, you gonna make me go ahead and do like we did at, uh, Blue Show, Chuck, and go ahead and get our own porta potty.
Look, I, look, let me tell you something. Go ahead and get that, cause we gonna need it. But let me tell you something. I tell everybody, on Saturday, bring everything. Decorate your table how you wanna decorate it. Bring your decor. I will be bringing some Z-Fi, everything to put on our table. Don't take my shit, but it's gonna be on display. And I have some drinks for those who, you know, choose.
I just got the merchandise to sell.
I got mezcal, cause, um, I'ma behave, Jack, Jack be getting me in trouble. Jack get me jacked up and in trouble. So I'm doing my mezcal and, uh, water. See what I mean? See what I mean? And, um, and we gonna have us a good time. I have some vegan foods for those who are vegan. If you don't bring hummus, don't touch my hummus, cause it's gonna be a hummus among us. You gonna be fucking humming. Don't touch my shit.
Go, go watch, go watch Mo, Mo Hammer, on Netflix.
I love that.
He's Palestinian and he talks about hummus. And he like, uh, the lady was. What'd you just say to me? You just insulted my whole, my whole family. Chocolate hummus, you know?
He's so hood, though.
Oh, man, he's so hood and his, his girlfriend, his girlfriend is Mexican. And I mean, it got all of the jokes, everything you think of.
It's, it's so good. I don't, I don't know if I like his standup as much as I like his TV show.
I like his TV show, the TV show.
I love the TV show.
Well, I'm gonna watch that.
Yeah, we need to invite him on the show too. I think it'd be.
But, uh, the whole weekend while we having fun fellowship, and we gonna be doing what other thing, Chuck?
We gonna get out the vote. We on GOTV, right? Okay, all right.
Yep, get out the vote. Reminding, election has consequences, leadership matters. We want you to understand that. So we gonna be pushing it all weekend. Right now, we are switching gears from voter registration to GOTV. We register about two, I think Sebier said it was about two hundred and sixty-five. Um, so. Brand new voters. Uh, we had a couple of folks that did a couple of change of. We, we rolling and we doing the polls. Big shout out to Al Ravon, the legendary goat of drum majors from Jackson State. For November eighth to help folks get to the polls and we gonna shout him out in a later date, but we, you have no excuse. Excuses are monuments of nothingness. Hey, and my tail dog is rolling with me all weekend. I'm telling you, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, we too hot to touch, too cold to be whole. I'm telling you, we gonna be rolling all weekend.
So nice to have the name twice, goddammit. DJ George took us in this.
We in this.
Well, we about to go somewhere. Where we about to go, y'all? No, we not.
Going to get the money, baby. Where the money reside?
Where the money reside, baby? When I tell you, you like the word, I'm your boy Cannon. We gonna get to Tugulu College this weekend. That's what we getting to. And we gonna get to where the money reside, baby. Y'all come holler at us, Tugulu Alumni Weekend, Nightcap Knowledge, Mike O'Live. I don't know what we might do. Ain't no telling, babe. Ain't no telling. Next week, we'll have Dr. Frederick Smith of Thrive Works Counseling, Psychologist and Mental Health Counseling. You know him. Dr. Fred in this thing. We'll see y'all next week. Peace.